This conference will now be recorded.
Uh, I do. On August 22nd, uh, we'll be the next city council meeting at 16:00 PM. And the citizens police is having to sign up on the municipal Facebook page. For all departments of recreation opportunities. One note, if anyone has emergencies in the city, please do not call City Hall. Please call 911, not City Hall. And let everybody know we are still under water restrictions. Uh, those with even numbered addresses may water on Tuesdays. And those with odd numbered addresses may water on Fridays. Continue to help us conserve water. These majors have helped us to keep an adequate water supply. So you don't have to enact stricter measures. I want to thank everybody that has applied. Um, next agenda is the consent agenda. We're on table number two with what we think is going to happen. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Break, moving on to the regular agenda. Uh, first item on the agenda for technology and cybersecurity auction.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have our vendor with us, Ryan Young, who is prepared to speak to Council on cybersecurity questions that we raised at the last meeting, as well as potentially answering anything else you'd like to adopt technology. If he's joining us, that's my question. I've also handed out at the table, you have a one-page document that he gave you all. If you have any questions or would like to ask him, you can look up that.
Thanks, Rep. Do you have any questions from last week? I'm sure it's our career.
So, let me kind of give you a recap of what we had at the two towns we need to go over. Last minute coming up before we run before that. We have an increase in our rates from TNL to cybersecurity. And so councils like to know kind of what we're doing now in that particular realm. And if you know, if you can get your help, then I can help you too. Based on cybersecurity coverage that we've been doing. It's about a thousand dollar increase a year. And some of our coverage amounts are going down. We've joined TNL through a recent tool that they've had for cybersecurity. And based on some of their claims and their data that they pulled over the past several years of having that tool, they have changed rates. You know, that we covered in that.
Yes, sir. You're not going to apply this in our group stuff. My general impression of TNL, which is crisis and COVID, is essentially, we give them a price for any traditional cyber insurance area. So we have another risk of insurance. So we exit the 2020. And we also have a security. And we also have a security. Obviously, we have a number of resources that we have to target. So specifically backups? Yes, backups. Generally, it's cyber. Yes. Um, so the backup solution we have right now is a great way to provide. So every time we get a lot of people, it's a good way to share. Right, it's very, it's a site. So we're supposed to expect you to be right there. So you are correct. Usually, if you're in a similar situation, the first thing they do is a technical. So when it comes to testing and to seeing if it's a good function, we've got a place to put it. It's okay. In terms of testing and to see if it's a good function. It's a good function. It's not so important now. It's okay. So what is the last? Beyond the fact that it's something that we need to discuss. Based on my experience, I would say we're not.
Yes, speaking, I would agree. We are not prepared for it. We have made some advances in the last year with some of the changes that we've made with our technology. But we've been behind in this particular area for quite a while. Mr. Young has brought forward some additional measures that he would recommend for us as part of this budget year. But it would be up to Council to help keep the funding below that particularly.
Mr. Young, I'm sorry. So to elaborate on what exactly is the backup solution? What is the data protection score? And the city hall, which is, uh, yesterday, we put out an application for all stakeholders. Uh, as I said, those are both captured and filed. And we also, we want to take part in the chair. So I'm not 100% thinking of this. So, say, getting crippled or copying and copying and copying. If you're grabbing things that are not good, so definitely doesn't help. Less. Would you agree?
So, I agree with you. One of the issues that we had is the server software that we bought, STW, was supposed to be transitionable to the cloud. We spent about 130-some-one thousand dollars for that particular software, which is financially based. And once Open Go bought STW and got into the program and did their due diligence, they realized that they were not able to convert that to the cloud. So they refunded a third of our money that we had paid. But they have no intention to upgrade their software and make it where we fully move to that type of the platform.
I'm specific. Right?
Thank goodness our back was tested. And it was a nightmare. It just turned very bad.
I share those. It was from me prior to, prior to this. But I can see that testing. So.
I think that the consequences for not doing anything here. Was that, what are we going to do?
Everything. It is everything.
What, what other, since we didn't ever, we didn't ever talk to administration about recovery. Check, recovery time, recovery, and your usage of this pre soft. What else?
So he and I meet, and he has presented several things to us that need to be handled on the end of cybersecurity as well as technology. We haven't had the funds to do it. We did use ARPA money last year to do some significant upgrades and make some strides in that area. But this is not something that's been a high priority.
So you're saying you don't want us at all? So it's been, so we took over, I think it was October 12th. At the time, there was so much to handle. And you had to try out the brand times the next week. So we haven't happened to see a backup to our group. But we have taken resources.
Okay, so from where we are right now, and so from where we are right now, what, what would you recommend we should do?
So, everything that's on the one page that we have, we have to save. All of those solutions are specific. It's not, it's not, it's not being an attack or an out. We have nine hours. That's what I mentioned, technicals, all of these is the one second. We need to wire stuff and stuff. Reach out and ask for advice. And we have a warranty. This vice is open. And that's, that's what it says. So it's all security operations, senior design. It's all intelligent. It's international. That usually happens a little bit. It's 100%. Now, for sure, it's now, it's a policy, so it's applying to. So it's, it's. From the system information system to you. So it's, it's. So it's federal regulations. Access by the rest of the nation.
So, forgive me. So this paper, hot paper, it's right.
It does not specify for the rest back.
Okay, so what? Also. So I don't know what the topic is.
So we didn't come necessarily with that. But we can put that on the agenda for a second and bring that back to you all.
I think it's also a good opportunity to make that. It's a good opportunity. It's a good opportunity. It's a good opportunity. We talked to the local city manager. It's a, it's a. So. Strategy is part of the agenda too. It's something to be, it's a free. It's a, it's a. And we're to, uh, like, as well. Loud or not. Prove. Yes, I've been in this. This one doesn't base itself. I'd like to see. How you feel about that? What else is possible?
So if you all are looking for a confidence of you on the services that we currently receive and where we can get to, we can put that together. That was not part of the competition for the beginning, but we can certainly.
Some pepper in it. And, uh, so. I know that we don't know. So. It's.
For you.
Go ahead, Council, direction. I will work with Mr. Young to get that to get together, please, and all.
Mr. Young, I want to say thank you because we do know that we have been operating like. On a school which is two legs, hard. For us.
Moving on to the second item on the agenda, Texas Water Association Water Base, Water Base State.
Thank you, Council. We have Lewis here with us this evening. He is ready to present and answer your questions. We're going to pull up a document for him, so he'll give us just a moment.
Okay, so is everybody comfortable on the council with different types of rates? So, like it declining uniform and increasing block rates? Do we need that explained? Okay. Yes, sir. Okay, so like your rate. I'll just read it out loud real quick. Like your rate is the simplest form of rate. All customers are charged the same rate per month, no matter how much they use. It's a very poor example of a rate per city. We're going to skip this because declining is not smart. Uniform rates, most common and easiest metered rate to calculate. Uniform rate structure is probably considered the most fair structure of all of the categories of customers. So it doesn't matter if you have a, if you're using 15,000 gallons a month or a year on social security, if you're using 1,000 gallons. And then inclining block rates, uh, they're structured in a manner where the cost per unit of water increases as the usage increases. So if you use 2,000 gallons of water, that's the way y'all are set up right now, actually. Y'all pay, uh, 2 to 10,000 gallons is 887 per thousand. And if one is 15,000, and 20,000 left is 1136. So that's an inclining block rate. Okay, so the way we do our rate studies is based off of your last audit. Your fixed and variable incomes. Okay, we add up all the fixed costs, five by twelve, we get our subtotal. And then we take the number of customers and that gives us our base rate to present to you guys. Breaking down how we put it all together. Uh, we add up all the variable costs, five by thousand gallons, and that equals our price per thousand that we want to shoot for. Or usually we want to be a little over the, the price per thousand, what it costs us to do. Because the utility fund needs to be making a little bit of money in order to reinvest back into the city. So according to your last audit, your fixed expense is over 600,000. And variable spending is over 1,068, for a couple of all nine. That's about 330,000. Uh, okay, so customers, actually 650. But AWA, AWA standards, this is where we don't even pull up the spreadsheet. Waters, we're using. Okay, so. Okay, so AWA standards says. Okay, so a five eighths by three quarter meter, according to AWA standards, American Water Works Association, is one, that counts as one meter. So when you go to a one inch meter, it counts as two and a half times that size. So the amount of flow of water is how they calculate what size meter it is. So a one inch meter, you're actually paying two and a half times what the five eighths meter can do because of the amount of water that it will run up. Same thing for two inch, goes all the way up to eight times, and so on and so forth, all the way up to, I don't know, 10, 12 inches. So when I say your minimum for water needs to be 4364, that's only for your five eighths meters. So somebody has a two inch meter, most of those are going to be commercial. Their minimum is 349. Then they start getting low. Because one of our recommendations is, right now, you currently give away 2,000 gallons of water included in your minimum. The problem with that is, water is our most precious resource. And when you pay for water, like, you guys are getting partial from a well, from wells and partial purchase, right? Mostly purch, right, mostly purchased, you try to supplement with the wells. Okay, so you're paying for a certain amount of water, you're paying for storage of that water, you're paying for the employee to handle any kind of disinfection or, um, collection system issues that may come up, any repairs of any pumps or anything like that. And you pay to get it to the meter. As soon as it hits the meter, that's what's included in your minimum. As soon as it hits the meter, customers can pay. And I'm not saying that to be mean to the customers in town. We say this everywhere we go, because water is so precious right now.
Just going to bring to Council's mind that our current system is set up where the base rate includes 0 to 2,000 gallons. Um, one of the things that we talked to Louis about is the fact that most cities are moving away from that particular rate structure because water is never free. And we have struggled to keep the utility fund afloat, as I have presented to Council before. So that's not news to anyone. But we've also not kept pace with rate changes as they needed to occur over many years.
And let's put this into perspective. I did the math a little while ago on this. Um, I added, you're giving away 2,000 of water and 2,000 away on sewer as well. Okay, so I added both of those for last year. Based on the number of meters you have, you are giving away 270,440 dollars a year. So almost 300 grand. Uh, and that's, that's more employees, that's employee raises. That's, all those things fit into, into this, this, uh, utility fund stuff that can be allocated. That's collection system, fixing the inflow and infiltration issues that every single town in Texas has because we're so dry one day and flooded the next.
And so to put that in different perspective, we just approved, the residents just approved 17 and a half million dollars in bonds out of general. Because utility fund could support the debt thing. Those bonds should have come out of utility fund, not general.
And that happens.
So, based on that, um, if we get our rate structure right, then we will be in a better position to provide the infrastructure upkeep, maintenance, staffing levels, services that our residents require. And this is just giving some context to some of the recent decisions in the past we've had to take here in the city.
Any questions so far? Okay, so let's go back to the presentation, please. Okay, this was the amount of average water sold for the year. And get back, we have 650 active meters. The equivalent of that is 805, okay? So that's why we went back to the two inch, the one inch, that's what makes up that number. They're all the same. All the next five minutes. Waste water. So, you guys agree, total expense is 753,618, 600 active wa, wastewater meters. And 71 million gallons of wastewater treated last year. All right, so next. This is where the banding. Okay, so, right now, you are currently charging 887 per thousand up to 10,000 gallons. I did not change that. What we would recommend is keeping your current rates for that part, the per thousand rate of 887. What we're suggesting is, you should go to 4364, which is an increase of $5.73. No, I did. Yeah, so we're, an increase of 573 on the minimum on the water side. So we're not going to break any banks on that part. Now, if you, if you guys can come to a consensus on getting rid of that 2,000 gallons, then you're looking at, it's going to be 22, 22 or 23 dollars. On the average household that just uses 2,000 gallons, uh, a month, that, that's, we're looking at about a 20 to 22 dollar increase. Now, if we're in a commercial business, obviously that's going to be a lot higher. Okay, wastewater, this one hurts. 688 is currently what, I, once again, we recommend you keep those. Your tiers on the sewer, 2 to 10,000 is $6.88, and 10,000 it up is 8,000, or 8 dollars per thousand. You're currently charging 2879 with a $2,000, or 2, $10,000, I apologize, 2,000 gallons giving away. So, we want to be at 5345. Is what our calculations, based on your current expenditures, fixed and variable, you are looking at 5345 per month, which is an increase of $24.66.
This is residential.
This is residential. So, yeah, they're taking a pretty good hit on this one. And from what I'm being told, it's been many, many years since that one has been increased, and that's why it's like that.
Well, it was actually increased three, four years ago to make up for some of the issues, but it had been held steady for decades before that, at 11 dollars.
And unfortunately, over the past few years, everything's doubled. Uh, and nobody likes it, but everything has doubled, and it is what it is. Uh, pricing of pipe, pricing of plants, uh, pricing of employees. Literally everything that we deal with in the water and wastewater industry. And unfortunately, a lot of this stuff is very monopolized. So a motor might be $20,000 just because that company's the only place you can get that hook. You know, something like that. We deal with a lot of things like that in the water and wastewater industry. So, in order to maintain your current expenditures, that is our recommendation, okay? We're no official agency, okay? We did this for you. We hope that you guys succeed and make as absolute much money as you can make to take care of your people and be able to maintain your industry. Yes, ma'am.
Say that one more time, in order to what? In order to maintain what?
Remember what I said? What did I say? I'm curious now.
So a lot of this, when we've talked about before, the depreciation on the assets that we currently have, we've not put back any money. We've not repaired a lot of things within the system, if that's what he is referring to. So once we get closer to being a utility fund that actually has the right rate structure, we will have some of that capacity from which to fund those repairs.
Right. Yeah, 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 so maybe perhaps I misspoke. What I was saying was, according to your expenditures on your last audit, in order for your utility fund to be in the black where we want it, and to be able to take care of the things that come up, when they come up, then. the things that come up, when they come up, then this is our recommendation, okay? Because we don't want y'all to lose money. Once you start losing money, you start losing people. And I am a firm believer in you can, you can purchase loyalty by taking care of people.
It's my concern, perception of citizens, maybe that you pass these bonds, and then look to them. That's.
I'm not sure about that, I did, I did not figure your bonds into, did I? I don't think so. Uh, I did not figure those bonds into, uh, your expenditures, because we try our best to keep general fund completely separate from utility, uh, as far as, as far as what we're paying for. Uh, so, I don't believe so.
And, and that's my point, is that those bonds against the general fund, reality, they should have been funded by.
Yeah, I'm not sure what your, what your bonds were for.
This is our situation.
Sure, no, I understand, I understand, um, was it for wastewater or what?
It's for a new wastewater treatment plant, it's for sanitary sewer line, this is for a water well, so yes, all three of those bonds should have gone against utility fund. However, knowing that this conversation was coming, and the fact that our utility fund is not currently meeting its obligations as it stands, the increases to fund the bonds and deal with the delinquencies that we've had in this account would be beyond the reach of a lot of people. And it would apply across the board to every user.
Right.
By putting it against the ad verum, with general fund at least for now, um, we have some insulation for elderly and disabled that doesn't exist if we hit the water rates. Does that make sense?
And you're pulling, you're pulling, uh, general funds to cover at this point, right? So you wouldn't have to do that anymore? So, you're not pulling.
We're not, we're not transferring money into general fund, but we are, um.
No, I'm right first, the other.
Well, we're not transferring general fund money into utility, but utility fund is there, general fund's there as a backup.
Right.
Because there are many years utility fund has lost.
Exact, that's my point, yeah, that, that's my point, is that you wouldn't have a lot more have to do that if you're bringing your rates up to current state.
Yeah, and I get that, but at what point does it all clear through, and all general fund, and utility fund? And, so that's my question, like, has increases, what are those increases supposed to be?
So we'll get to some of that in the budget conversation, because there is a list of unfunded, under discussion capital projects for utility fund, or capital purchases that we need to make for that department. There is also staffing shortages within public courts that are, need to be addressed in some form or fashion, and we have a cup for this, have one solution at the lowest level of what payroll would, impact would be. So we'll talk about that in the budget discussion itself, um, but when we reach a point for this to equalize to some extent, and when our tax base diversifies, we're not there yet. And this may be a short term issue that general fund is handling, those are some point we may be able to move to utility fund, but we don't have enough commercial diversification, retail diversification, to help supplement our costs. We are also giving a half a cent to the county in sales and use tax, and we're giving half a cent back to the residential property tax offset. That's another million, like, $1,000 a year.
That's, with the perception of being.
Completely agree with you.
Hey, watch. That happens a lot, right? And because the, most of the average citizens don't understand the difference between utility and a general fund.
That doesn't matter.
Oh, I agree with you. Yeah, no, absolutely, perception of reality, right?
What is the correct, what is the right?
I cannot make that decision for you.
I, I agree, but that's what we have to do.
Sure, totally, totally understand completely.
Well, what is right for the city is what's the best for the long term prospects for this city, is to get our rate structure right, so we can start funding our operations, maintenance, and replacement out of the fund where it should come from, which is the utility fund. I know it's gonna hurt, and we knew there was some hard decisions to be made, because these hard decisions weren't made 20 years ago, and now we're paying the piper still. I know it stinks, but if we can get our rate structure fixed, we can start maintaining, operating, and replacing old equipment, and having our city services funded where they should be funded from, which is out of the utility.
The other question that's come in from Mrs. Ty is, have we considered any rate changes on commercial or just central residential?
I mean, this was across the board, I did not figure any, any commercial into it, so if you have a higher rate for, uh, commercial, then I would just take it by percentage. Whatever percentage.
Did you want to raise the sewer rates?
That's the recommendation.
Are you charged for the 2, 2,000 gallons?
The recommendation would be to raise the base rate and to stop the inclusion of 2,000 gallons in that rate. So, you have a base rate, and then anything that you use thereafter is charged at either $6.88 per thousand gallons for sewer, or $8.88 per water.
Yeah, and you're looking at over a hundred thousand dollars in savings, just knocking out the three, 2,000 gallons on both sides.
Yeah, but for 2,000 gallons, you may be charging for now, I mean, not now, but you start, people watering their lawns, that's not sewers. So, why are they getting charged extra money for sewers?
From what?
But it's going into the yard, or if they wash their car, or, you know, stuff like that.
That's a, that's a very small percentage of the public.
Well, I look, small.
I understand what you're saying, uh, and what, we deal with that all the time, we, we try to, we try to figure 95% goes down the drain, on average, uh, because of dishwashing, washing clothes, taking a shower, doing the dish, all, all that different, all those different things go down the drain, majority of the time. So, we figure roughly 95%.
Is what?
Did you base?
That goes down the drain, that's took, that goes to the sewer plant.
Did you base this off of that or a hundred?
This is, this was based off the sewer's flow at the wastewater plant. Okay, so this is not based off of per household, this is not coming from them, this is what actually flowed, flowed through the plant last three years, is we took an average of the last three years flow through the wastewater plant.
You've taken it as the flow.
Yes.
But you're wanting to charge gallons per gallon.
I don't think that that number is included in these rates that you have.
Not in the minimum.
He's only taking the 95% that goes to the sewer plant and basing those calculations off those numbers. The 5% that might be used to wash a car, fill up a pool, or, um, water the lawn is not included in these rates.
How can you say that if you're charging?
Because he's, he's looking at the, the nu- the amount of gallons that went to the sewer plant for the last three years, I mean, those are the numbers.
Those is, it's what actually was treated with chemicals that you purchased, and employees that you have, and the equipment that you're using, the location you have to treat this wastewater, okay? So, that money, and I'm not asking you to change the $6.88 that you are already charging per thousand gallons, okay? You're just not starting to charge that until it hits the 2,000. But, bottom line is, it's, you're, you're losing money for no reason, because everybody is treating it. That, that first 2,000 gallons is no different than the next 2,000 gallons, it was treated by the same people at the same location with the same equipment.
I'm not talking about the water, I'm talking about sewer.
Talking about wastewater, I am too, I'm talking about at the wastewater plant, there's people there that take care of that wastewater, and they treat it with chlorine, and.
I understand.
So.
But you're charging now, gallon per gallon, not based off of that.
Not giving away 2,000. Yes, sir. Because it's, because you shouldn't be giving away anything, you're a business.
I'm not.
You're, you're a city.
I understand, but you're, you're not giving it away if you're not using it. If I'm watering my yard, washing a car, kids outside playing, that's water that doesn't go through.
It's such a small percentage of our wastewater, that it's almost.
But it's a small percentage you're charging me for.
Okay, I understand.
Or the, I'm not saying just me, but anybody.
Yeah, no, I, I understand, I understand, we're not, we're not yelling, I, I get it, I totally understand what you're saying. Uh, it's just, unless you just want to say, you're gonna pay 20 bucks a month for sewer, no matter how much you flush down the toilet, then there's not a good answer, other than, we're gonna charge you per thousand. If you want to say that the city is going to charge you 90% of whatever water you use, then, and put per thousand on sewer, so you used 100,000 gallons of water this month, we're gonna charge you for 90,000 gallons of sewer, you can do that. Now, that's completely up to you guys, you can get as flexible as you want to get, to, especially to justify it to the citizens, because, I mean, that's what we work for, right? So, I'm, I'm with you, I understand what you're saying, but something has to be paid for. Because we can't maintain this stuff, and we can't buy a new wastewater plant without proper rate setup. $28 is not even near a good price for wastewater these days.
It might be cheap to use the need, risk.
Totally understand. Stop for senior citizens, yep, 100%, that's why we go up on the commercials. We don't, we try not to hurt the senior citizens as much as we can, that's why we were only going, remember we were gonna charge 20 bucks on the water side? That, they might see a $20 increase now, you're right, they're gonna see a $27 increase here.
So now you're at $47.
Yes, sir, yep.
And that's a month.
That's a big deal.
Yes.
Absolutely, I, I'm not arguing that point at all, but these are the facts. I, I can't change them, I just, I, this is the information that I have, based on the calculations that we did. I, I hate it for them, I'm for too. I can't, I don't want my water bill to go up either, I totally understand, and I'm doing the same thing for the city I live in. So, I'm gonna regret it myself.
The other thing, I'd like to remind Council is, we did a rate study not that long ago, and this is the same information that was presented, but we made hard decisions at that point, the commercial was changed, and I understand from looking at the minutes that there were many discussions at the council level as to what that should and shouldn't be. Mrs. Ty has texted, and she's concerned about what this would mean for commercial, and I understand that. Um, the choice is completely at Council's discretion, you can do nothing, you can do some variation of this, or you can do all of it. It's, it's really, we're bringing you the information because we'd be remiss if we don't. And, this is never a popular discussion, but I will tell you that we should never have had to issue those bonds out of general fund. Because we have now completely eliminated, at this point, our ability to address facilities, because we, our AV rate is going for infrastructure that should have been handled out of that enterprise bond, so.
I, I don't think there's any, I don't, I don't think there's any argument about we need to do something, it's just what we need to do, so it feels a little bit like way down here, or just way up here.
You don't have rip and bands.
So, I feel like we need to come up with a plan, we're trying to figure out, I also want to be, and then, we're gonna need to, we're charging what to with the whole heart of our citizens, is their sewer from New York, or my heart, or.
So let me, let me do some analysis, and I will bring it back for us to discuss, but Louis's job is to come in and explain the numbers and how he calculated them, and then once we get those numbers, I can put some real life Rome application to them, and bring it back to you all to make a decision. We're not here to ask for any action this evening, we're not here to tell you it has to be A or B or C, it's your discretion. And I understand that coming on the heels of the bonds to Mr. Loftus's point, that is difficult to understand.
And could we also decide when we need to raise the rate?
Yes, you can.
So, we could, we could do some steps.
I know, in the past, um, we've done, when I believe it was when the ramp was there, we did three increases in one year, in order to get to where they needed to go. Um, so I've gone back and I've built all that into our water structure, just trying to get a handle on how we ended up in the position that we're in today. And if you will give me a little bit of time to do some analysis, and once you've looked at this information, I can put our own particulars to it, and that will probably be a lot easier for you all to make an informed decision. This is just to give you the baseline from which we're working.
Do you want to, uh, understand, you have 600 meters on the side, how many of those actually use our sewer, like us?
A lot less.
And, uh, the other thought I had is, you know, why do these cities in New York, Texas, use a water runoff fee as part of their water supply? And, um, do you have some experience with that?
I have not had to deal with that at all. So, I, no, sir, I cannot, I can't speak to it, because I don't have enough information.
I'm sorry, I don't know what that is.
You just go out and, water runoff fee, that's your 2,000, city, or, or, or.
Okay, yeah, so, uh, I'm funded by the USDA, uh, through Texas River Water Association, we only deal with towns under 10,000 populations, that's probably why I don't have that, you know. Nobody that I know of does that. And also to speak to, uh, Mr. Johnson, also, um, that, my recommendation is, if you're gonna do something and you're gonna step into it, which is totally fine, get rid of that 2,000 person, and then go from there. But, to your point, you just want to get rid of the 2,000 in the water and leave the sewer alone. That's, that's up to you guys as well. You know, obviously, the minimums are gonna need to be addressed, but, uh, as far as the, the, uh, the free part, that, that's up to you guys. This, this is my opinions, okay? Don't lynch me after the meeting.
No, I, I, I want to thank you, because it's the first time, like, I actually understand all of that.
Good.
It's clear.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, Counsel, if you give me just a minute, I'll pull up the next presentation.
Next, we are, we're getting.
Okay, Counsel, I apologize, the system itself did not help you, it's over, uh, so we'll just have to go with what we have in front of you, um, slide deck. Mrs. Ty, do you have access to your computer? Hey, I will email you the slide deck so you can see it from here.
Take a five minute recess, and then we'll, if I can take a caution, like.
Thank you, Mayor, so, you do have in front of you the proposed budget presentation, I printed copies, bless the week, in case we have a technical difficulty, Mrs. Ty has a copy with her. We will post this on the website tomorrow or Monday for residents who'd like to see it after the fact, if you will go to the documents tab in the top right hand corner of our website, and click on that, it will, underneath you will see presentations for Council, then click on 2024, and you should find the same presentation that Council put together, so, I apologize that we had a little, it turns out we have a little hiccup from City Hall updating the computer over here, and that's why I'm so busy today. So, if you will go to slide number two, you will notice that we have some budget assumptions and notes as it relates to this year's budget, and this is very helpful for you all, as well as myself, to keep track of conversations that we've had, and things that have transpired as it relates to a budget document, and as it goes through the various iterations of versions, as you all review it. So, tonight, we reviewed the base budget that comes in on July 11th, tonight, we will go through what I call iteration number one, we will have some feedback from Council as it relates to the priorities that I was given related to this budget, and then from there, um, we will probably have version two. And then from there, uh, we will probably have version two and we can eventually get to a budget that you will adopt as well as I have tax rate information this evening. So as you recall, the base budget has all budget for revenues and expenditures within that budget. I do not have health insurance rates available as of today. We generally project any or intended twelve percent increase just to be conservative. And hopefully we will come in under that, but I, I won't know until later in the year given when our calendar year coverage starts. There are compensation options for current staff that are in this budget. I'm also giving you a printed page that says draft at your table to review. There are new position requests related to direction I've received from you all so that you can consider those. I have added some capital permit projects that were improved by the residents via our election in May. And then I have a list of those that I consider unfunded or under discussion that you all will like, um, like you to look at and we'll eventually like to put some here as to when we think we might like to pursue some of those. The debts, debt rates and taxes that are calculated and provided in today's presentation come from county. And once we get to that page, I'm happy to answer any questions about. If you'll go to slide number three where it talks about the tax base, you will see that from FY eighteen nineteen to current year's time, we have had an increase of about a hundred and sixteen million dollars in tax-based valuation. While that does seem like a considerable amount, it, it could grow exponentially as we start to diversify. Especially once Ace Hardware comes in, as I mentioned to you all before, I've had a conversation with another vendor as it relates to fast food. If that comes in and they construct the shopping center they're talking about that goes with it, we'll see those numbers change very quickly. However, when you look at just the numbers that you have before you from eighteen nineteen to twenty-four twenty-five, that's an eighty percent increase in tax-based valuation. If you'll go to slide number four, you have seen this slide before in your other budget presentation. This is our tax rate history from nineteen ninety-four coming forward. You will see that in the last year for twenty-four twenty-five, there's a significant uptick in the tax rate. This is the voter approval tax rate for this year and this does include the debt service that's required with the three bonds that the residents approved in May of this year. Any questions on this? So then moving forward to the next slide, five. This is where it gets to be a little bit more interesting for folks as we look at how we're providing for our operational costs and maintenance of a variety of equipment, buildings, et cetera. You will see from seventeen eighteen coming forward, we've only had a change in maintenance operation tax rate of three cents. So the majority of our debt currently, excuse me, our tax rate currently is made up of debt. If you will just look at five and six side by side if you can, you will see that the debt tax rate is about thirty-eight cents and the M and O tax rate is about twenty-five cents. When we have compared this with some other cities around us that are in our peer group, Boy, Taylor, Bridgeport, et cetera, they're all closer to the forty, fifty, sixty cents tax rate overall, but they have a considerably higher amount of funds that are going to maintenance and operations, which is where we are structuring. They also have a much larger diversification in the tax base. If you just think about the amount of places that you can shop or eat in those three communities, they're ahead of us on the curve a little bit. So as we start to see that part of our tax base expanding, diversifying, you will start to see some of these numbers move in a better, better direction for us. So then if we move ahead to slide number seven, this is simply a look back in a different form of our tax rate from eighteen nineteen forward. You can see that it was moving steady there for a while and then with the tax rollback petition in our last or current fiscal year, it dropped ten cents and then you see next year it's going up just under thirty cents, about twenty-eight in order to take care of the first year of the debt with the bonds that we are going to issue. I have worked with our financial advisor to calculate all of these numbers, gotten into accounting. They have been very helpful in getting us all of these numbers back. So blessedly we don't have to calculate all of this. So I'm going to go over, if you look at slide eight and some of these thereafter, very quickly, some of the tax rate definition because this gets to be a little bit moving as you go through the process. So the known new revenue rate is basically you take last year's levy and you subtract any losses and it's meant to give you the same amount of money in the coming fiscal year and you're having the last. That's why they call it known new revenue. Very easy to understand. So if you look then at the voter approval tax rate, which is the V H R, that is allowed to give you a three and a half percent increase in your tax rate to pay for maintenance operation that is not petitionable by the residents. You'll recall that we kept the tax rate in this current fiscal year the same as the previous fiscal year, but it didn't exceed this voter approval rate. So we had a petition filed and during the May elections, the residents did not approve. It's remaining at the four point seven eight one five and so we rolled it back to twenty-three three. Any questions on this? So then looking at slide nine, we also have a de minimis rate, which is meant to generate five hundred thousand dollars for a city in any given year to address a variety of projects. Anything above the voter approval tax rate is petitionable by residents and as we have all recently experienced, it doesn't take very many signatures to trigger that petition alone because we only have about a thousand or eleven hundred registered voters in our community. So I don't know what would come in this year if you exceeded it, but it may be likely that you would have another petition that we would need to process. There is also a portion of your tax rate called the unused increase. So if you set a tax rate that's lower than the full tax rate allowable by the city, they consider that unused pending, which you could then assess in the coming year. We do not currently have them sitting in reserve, so this is really not a feature that we're going to address this year. So then looking at slide ten, you will see the calculations for our current tax rate, which is at point three three five three seven two, which is the voter approval rate from last year. The known new revenue rate is point three six four six eight oh, which we really cannot adopt because then we won't be able to serve and pay the debt on the bonds that we are about to issue. So I would recommend that you adopt the voter approval rate at point six one eight seven six eight or somewhere in between there and the de minimis rate, knowing that if you exceed the middle number, you may receive a petition from residents again to lower.
My comment, but I would highly recommend this voter approval rate. I think my registration is where it needs to be. So I would be in trouble. If you help out, we'll be fine.
So then looking at slide number eleven, this shows your tax rate in two different scenarios. The blue is your maintenance and operations and your red is your debt. You will see that up until we had reduced some of that debt, we had paid off some of that and we had to increase the rate for the coming year. That will pay the interest on the three bonds that we hope to have actually sold and moving in September, October timeframe. And so this rate may change a little in this figure that will be in twenty-five twenty-six, but we'll come to that direction again. Any questions on maintenance and operations, INS, which is your debt rate, or the voter approval rate, et cetera? That really sets the baseline for everything else that I will do with this budget based on the direction that I received from council this evening.
So I'm, I'm against the addition of how it's going to budget. That's where the purpose of your, that's where I, I will now. And with this, and for?
Discussion and any necessary action that we call that. You'll see right above, so.
Right, but there's nothing right now that we can do for twenty-four, right?
For the current fiscal year?
Right.
Cause I listed the current fiscal year.
She's asking for this year and next year is guidance on how to prepare to finalize budget that you guys will approve. Cause she's got to be able to know where and what the numbers and what is, you know, what is council's, how she develops the budget. We're not approving the budget today.
Right, that's true. Tax rate is dead.
Yes, ma'am, dead, correct. That's what I, yes, ma'am. There's no change to that. What I need is some direction on where you want to set it for the coming fiscal year.
Yeah. Second.
Second.
All right. Hi.
Hi.
All right, one go.
The sound just went out. Can you hear us now? Can you give me a thumbs up for voter approval rate? Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. Okay, so based on that information, I will work with the county to get any of the necessary items that we need to do as it relates to publishing the rate and get that out there. I will also update social media page as well as our website page just to help spread the news for folks who are following and watching it all and who are interested in this particular matter. So then moving into the other items that I was given some direction on from council was to look at pay scales for the current staffing levels. You will recall, if you look at slide thirteen, that last budget year, you went through a fairly in-depth process to approve and set a pay scale for each position that includes a minimum, a midpoint, and a maximum salary amount. I have since received direction that pending finances being available, that we start to work towards getting within three percent of that median. We're not there yet for most of our positions, but this would be a recommended change in payroll that would help get us closer. At the handout that you have at your desk, it does contain each position. It kind of tells you where each one would be and how that salary would change for that position. So I'm happy to answer any questions on that. The information is also there on slide fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen going forward for general fund. Slide seventeen should be your water utility fund or public works. I will tell you that on average for general fund, it would be a seven percent increase, not across the board, not each position. It's being recommended for the same. For instance, the police department average increase would be eight percent, but you can see according to the slide, which position would get ten, eight, or six depending upon where they are within their position pay scale. The fire chief and firefighters would receive an eight percent increase based upon where they are in the pay scale. And then the average increase for administrative staff is six percent. So you'll see that those are different. Have any questions on any of this information? Two to it. So overall, if you were to categorize all that, it'd be about seven percent to general fund from the standpoint of current staff as a system. If you look at slide seventeen, you will see that the same information is contained there as it relates to the four positions we have in utility fund from eight, ten percent on down to six. That is an average increase of seven and a half percent for that particular fund, but where it really starts to make some sense to everyone is if you look at slide eighteen and nineteen, I have then put corresponding amounts to those percentages. So if you look at slide eighteen as relates to administration, police, and fire, the impact to general fund would be about ninety thousand dollars. And if you look at slide nineteen, the impact to the utility fund would be about twenty-five thousand dollars. In utility fund, the only position that we have that is within three percent of the median are the public works technicians. And on most of these positions, one of the things that I've explained is this is a multi-year approach. We, I would not recommend to you that we make a giant leap at one time. So we made a change last year. This is a recommended change for this year and then we will reevaluate in the coming year. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about this item because this was one of the priorities that I was given from council. I'm looking for direction from council so that I know how to continue to build the budget and which way do you want us to pursue.
I would wait that for the first year to see how the election goes and what the voters would have.
Council has the ability to make a decision that would be effective on October one or January one or March one. It's really at a council's discretion or to make no change. That is well within your boundaries to provide us with that. I just need to know how to continue to calculate our numbers so I know what an uprising will have. Yes and no. So looking through this lens, um, if you want this to be an October one move, these are your numbers. If you want it to be a January one move, then I'll go back and recalculate based on, you basically divide this influence. They're calculated in at, at an eighteen percent increase.
So this is the number like eighteen nineteen. And thus, our, our staff is starting from the beginning.
Yes. So I anticipate a surplus in this current fiscal year as well. We had a surplus last year based on the 3.5% increase that we, we were wanting to take the voter approval tax rate, you would have a 3.5% increase in revenue based on that. We will have additional revenue from the 2020, we will have additional revenue from A's hard work coming in. So we will see an expansion and I don't expect those numbers to go down in the next fiscal year, but I know there's been some concern expressed to me about what may happen if the economy takes a negative turn on the November, December timeframe. And that's something that council will want to consider and determine which way you want to go.
So, I mean, what effect, what parts of the economy taking would significantly impact?
We would see a reduction only in sales and use tax to a great extent, and we've been exceeding that by several hundred thousand dollars each year. So the estimates that I've been giving you on sales and use tax have always overperformed, which is why we've had additional funds put back, if you will, into our fund balance. So one year is not, in my opinion, based on the years that I've been doing this, it's not going to be a needle given, we're not talking half million dollars. We're talking 125, 115,000, and we've been exceeding in sales and use tax by 300,000 dollars a year.
We currently have a surplus.
We currently have a surplus, we have several hundred days in reserves, and the numbers that I'm showing now indicate that we will have another surplus this year. Now, this whole year is not done, but we're pretty darn close, and I monitor that monthly. So I would feel comfortable with council moving up October 1. I've had some feedback that not everyone is comfortable with. So what I'm saying is that other councils that I have worked with and made recommendations to have made that decision for payroll increases to be preferred until January 1 or at another time in the year, maybe mid-year, to make sure that the revenue materialized as expected. And that is entirely a council decision.
The budget analysis, these numbers that are being presented to you are not dipped into our reserves, we call it. My name, we're not touching the reserve. This is the winner's budget parameter, it can be superior at this point. Not trying to run the city based on who wins election. We have, we have to look beyond that 10, 20, 30 years down the road, and we have good people in the city. Personally, I'm taking care of good people. It's up to the council, it's your decision.
We're taking care of good people. Also, I'd love to say yes, but it's kind of...
So we can either consider this, or we can have some direction this evening. I can have some direction on the 22nd, but we're getting close to approval of the budget and we've got to make some decisions. We also have some harder conversations that we need to have as we're changing to slide 20, and public safety services, so maybe we can move into that discussion.
It's up to you. You have some direction.
Thank you, May. Yes?
I would like to adopt the pay scale analysis recommendation for this year from 4.5 to October 1.
You have a second? All right, can you go up in favor?
Aye.
Sky? Can you hear us?
She can only hear me, she can't hear the rest of you. Are you interested in making a change in adopting the pay scale recommendations to begin October 1 of this coming fiscal year or delaying them? Option 1 or 2? The motion was to adopt the numbers that you see on slide 18 and 19 as it relates to current staff, that these pay scale changes would start on October 1 of the new fiscal year. All right, council, thank you for that information. I will continue with our budget document based on that feedback and that direction that I perceive. I would like to reiterate and try and give some folks a little bit of reassurance that I am a conservative budget person. I do not want to put you in a position where as a city, I have to come to you and say, we've underperformed. So I'm very cautious in any revenue projections and we're very cautious in what we expend. I will do my darndest to make sure that we never stray from that and not put us in that type of a position that Mr. Johnson's worried about. Some of those things are beyond our control, but the elasticity of sales and use tax would really sustain and change dramatically or even fail as much as, as what we were talking about there. Now when we get to a little bit deeper conversation, the direction I received from council was to bring back some numbers and some information as it relates to public safety services and other staffing requirements as needed for the city. You will see that the first line talks about hiring an additional one person per shift or firefighter, so that we would actually have two people on shift at a time instead of one. It is extremely dangerous that we have one person that can respond even if we have volunteers or part-timers or the chief that is going out and being a part of those calls. Case in point, what happened at Love's today. It was a big event. We, I know that the chief and the firefighter we have on staff have been out there all day trying to deal with this issue, and it makes it extremely hard for us to provide baseline city services or at least the public safety. Ideally, it would be three people per shift, but we are not in a financial position to do that. I will tell you that I've had some additional conversations with one of our neighboring communities developers that currently funds a firefighter. I have asked them to fund a second firefighter, but I do not know what the outcome of that will be. I'm very hopeful that they will consider that, which then would reduce the amount that you see here on your slide if they make that decision to move forward. You will also see that there's a police sergeant recommended in this. Chief Davis has been very consistent in that request and the benefits therein. So you can see that number reflected in your total amount. The benefits were calculated based on the current numbers that we are extending to people in this position. The other that could wait or could move forward based on community feedback is a code enforcement officer. I can tell you that the city of Aurora has looked for someone to partner with and they might be willing to assist in some of the costs for this position, but we, we could keep a code enforcement officer present. We have several different areas where that could be of use. It's just something for council to consider based on whatever goes in the committee. The real issue is you see the total for all of those positions in your far right-hand corner where it says general fund impact. This is not something that we have currently funded, nor do we have the depth in the coming year to fund that without looking into fund balance. So that would be a question that council would either need to consider and provide direction later, or consider some portion therein of this, but this is one of the hard decisions to make. I'm happy to entertain any questions. Um, this is just, this is the minimum that I would recommend. I mean, we really need six firefighters, but we can't afford that at this point. So we are the one that has the party bracket and what you're thinking. We could certainly reevaluate this if we have that part of our budget. Based on overtime numbers and money that we had left in payroll for this current year, you approved the hiring of a weekend firefighter, and that's been very hopeful to try and render the impact on the staff that we have now. So there's many different ways that we can come at this, but it is certainly something to consider, council. You can also make the decision to, you know, move this forward now to be effective on October 1 or delay until January 1 to mitigate some of the costs, and those things are still within the realm of discussion, but I feel like we were missed in what we were providing in public safety, especially in the area of...
Something like 180 for 3, or is that...
So that, we'd have to reduce that, that, you have to divide that 180 by 3 to get, subtract that from it in order to get the base pay.
Okay, that's, that's what I get.
Right, so it would be 120 for their base pay, 2 for the, 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 the 2.
I'm happy to do that. That was a request they actually sent out to multiple cities to obtain a bid on a code enforcement officer. I understand that they need one about 20% of the time, and I can certainly do a bit of work for 80%. One of the other things that we could do as relates to code enforcement is you can hire that position on a year-to-year basis. It's a little more challenging, but we might be able to find a consultant that would be willing to come in and do that, or a contractor that's willing to do that. And then if the partnership doesn't work with Aurora, or if we can't fund them in the following year, then we simply don't fund that in the next fiscal year, but that's something to consider.
That's one that I would wait until January 1.
I'll do some inquiries.
Is there any more discussion? If not, I would like to hear a motion.
So I would recommend new positions for two firefighters and a police sergeant to executive on November 1, 2024.
Motion in second, in favor?
Aye.
She'd like to make sure that everyone spoke directly into the mic. It's hard when we do this. I noticed when I was trying to do minutes, it did change some things, but she can't hear the motion. So the motion of Mrs. Sky is to pursue the hiring of two firefighters and one sergeant to be effective 2 to 1 with the current, coming fiscal year. We will wait and see on a code enforcement officer what type of partnership we could potentially enter into or alternatives in this service delivery area and the public works technician. We will bring up again at the next meeting after we have some additional numbers on the utility fund.
Motion here.
Okay, thank you. I will continue as we are working through the budget to tighten the numbers and bring it back, and that way you have some hard and fast data that you could potentially either feel better about or give additional direction if it, if something changes between now and the end of the fiscal year.
I would also like to say that I hope public works knows that we see that they have a need for just trying to figure out.
They do. So if you will move ahead to slide number 22. These are the funded projects that we currently have in our capital improvement plan. I'm still working on a format that would make sense for our budget to try and explain what we're doing within each of these projects. You will notice that I still have the sanitary sewer line repairs for the east plant as the last item on this list. We have about $350,000 still sitting in an interest-bearing account from that debt issuance that when we mobilize for the sanitary sewer lines for the west plant, we will include the east plant, so we have some economies of scale, and we will hit both sides of our city at the same time to try and get as big a bang for the buck as we can out of that money. The bonds that were issued for the east plant, you cannot use them for anything else. So the sanitary sewer lines will help with that. I and I run off to the east plant with those old clay pipes in that area and will be a benefit to our community. So if you'll then look at slide number 23, this is where I'm talking about that these items are unfunded under discussion. And I know that it's kind of small, so I'll walk you through this. We've talked about the street repairs that we need to make on behalf of the community. You will recall that the additional funds that were going to be generated by the property tax rate for this fiscal year were going to be dedicated to street repairs, so we have since amended, or will be amending the budget to remove that approximately $250,000, so we don't show that as an upside-down number in there. We still have the facilities, which is the old city hall. We have rented city hall facilities. Our lease is actually up this year in that building. We have the police station, the fire department, the public works, the old senior center, and we have fire apparatus replacement needs. We have technology upgrade needs for this building based on the number of people who actually watch our meetings and have expressed some displeasure in the inability to be heard or for them to hear us. So that's something that we may want to consider. We've talked about before electronic signs at city hall or at various locations within the city to help better spread the news about things going on in Rome with our residents. I have about 30 people who have signed up for the electronic newsletter, and we are getting closer to launching the new website. We've looked at some of the initial work and it really looks good, but it's not out there yet. And there's a need in the fire department for a general. So these are just some of the initial items that staff have brought to me that need to be dealt with or addressed. You will see that there are years going out for the next five that typically council will say, okay, street repairs, we want to make sure those are inventoried and prioritized for the coming fiscal year, and then we're going to try, try and start funding some in '26, '27, something along those lines. So that you don't lose sight of the things that need to be done on behalf of the community, but you need to make it very clear that these haven't been, no debt has been issued for these, no immediate plans were made for these. These are simply placeholders so that we don't lose sight of them in everything else that's going on. that's going on in this city. That's why we title them "Unfunded" and other discussion. So hopefully that makes some sense, and as we continue to develop the capital improvement plan and we get more into strategic planning and subventioning conversations that will continue to go on, I hope to fill in this information as we move through the budget. Does that make sense? So if you look at the next slide, this is the one as it relates to utility fund. And this kind of brings us back around to that discussion earlier, what we're going to do with the rates. We're currently, at least for this fiscal year, we were shown to be about $400 to the good with the revenue and expenditures that we had projected. I can tell you that our emergency repairs have far exceeded the number that we had budgeted, and just given the amount of tanker trucks that we've had to call out to cypren off the wastewater at the west plant, we've exceeded that line out of this one. So I will be surprised if that one's not ultimately in the red, but again, we'll see as this year closes out. So based on that, I think you've heard the mayor discuss the fact that we have several miles of water line that go across a variety of properties that our staff have no way to get back into short of walking those miles into the park. Utility vehicle would be extremely helpful to them, so that they could make routine checks and make sure that we are minimizing any loss or water loss that we know is currently sitting at 19% as it relates to our system. They could use a skid steer for a variety of things going on within that public works department. We've talked about a factor replacement. You all know that we have a very large truck that we need to sell, and we need to purchase a trailer-mounted system that can help us do some of the overflow removal on our own. We need a hydro jetter that's also trailer-mounted in order to get around delegate piping, so that we don't hopefully break something. We need a hot box machine, so that we can repair some of the roadways ourselves. As you know, ground storage water tank repairs are needed. You do also have at your place, I gave you a booklet of a funding seminar that I went to at Upper Trinity Regional Water District. This is similar to the conversation that Mr. Loftus and I had with Texas Water Development Board last year. It just does a better job of laying out the programs that are available to us, and Mr. Dominguez and I have identified a couple of different programs that we could apply for. One that would deal with the ground storage water tank repairs is what we're hoping. And then you will see down there at the very last one, you'll see generators for the pump station for the emergency projection plan that we have, or the ETP. Mr. Dominguez and I were very surprised by the number when it came in on those generators. And just the purchase of the generators alone is currently today a million and a half. We're going to have to seek grants for that as well. We don't have that funding available. We don't have it in reserves, and we can't, would we raise the rates enough to generate that money? So we're going to have to look for that also. So the booklets you have in front of you is opportunities that we could potentially explore in order to meet that requirement. They could still use a one-ton truck to move equipment, and we need a disinfection booster, both at EPN 3433 and some of our water wells. You know we need to rehab our existing elevated tank. It is past its time for such type of work. We very much could use a second elevated tank. If we ever have to take the one we have offline, we don't have any backup.
If the elevated tank goes offline, we have no way to pressure out the line. We don't have vacuum pump.
And a secondary water source, which I've talked to you all many, many, many times. That's something that we continue to pursue. The mayor and I went to the regional mayor's meeting this week, and we talked about a variety of things as it relates to submitting information back to the attorney that is pursuing legislation for us to form a regional water district, so that continues to move forward. So when we talk about a variety of things in the utility fund, even if you decide that we need to fund public works technicians, we have a list of things behind that that the team really could use, that they are without, or we're renting, or they've just done the best they can. They do an excellent job of doing the best they can with what they're given. That team pulls off air pulls almost every day, or given the miles of our system, both water and sewer, and the equipment and the age of what they're working on, and I had is off to them. So just trying to be completely transparent, for lack of a better word, as to what that department is facing. This is not something that we've just found ourselves in today. These have been issues that have been brought up, dealt with, attempted to be dealt with over the years, and they are going to continue, and I promise you, they continue for every city. This is not just specific to Aurora. So the last particular page that you see there, Slide 25, just talks about a variety of things that we've reviewed before. If I could call your attention to the review of the half a percent local sales and use tax as it relates to the property tax offset. You all had given direction that we needed to pursue that for the November ballots. However, I found out today that in order to do so, we have to have that direction provided by August 19. We do not have another council meeting to bring that up then. So if you are looking to pursue it in November, we would have to schedule a special meeting, and I would need a super good job. If you are looking to delay it until May, then we have time to get the language together and put it on that particular ballot. There are pros and cons in either direction. As I mentioned to you all in this particular situation, if we converted that property tax offset to a prime controlled district, my latest calculations was that's over half a million dollars that we could use for police, and that would really go along well for not having just one officer on patrol, and all of the other ancillary causes that relates to providing public safety. So we can call a special meeting and put it in November and see how that goes. Often, small cities don't fare well in national elections in November. We can delay it until May. We're not going to be catastrophic either direction, but don't know which way we want to go with this.
Wouldn't that have set sales tax in place? Is it computer, who's doing that?
The computations are generally done by the appraisal division in one's county.
Is there any information about...
Their frequent taxation worksheets contain all of those numbers that they put into the various, eight or 10 pages on that form. Where I'm taking my dollar amounts from are basically the sales and use tax feedback that we receive from the state as a master collection.
The direction I'm going is that it's not using taxes and sales tax, and... Upset.
I think it would be easier, easier communication.
It definitely has a lot going on that we don't know. That's great. That's all I needed on that. Okay, so that concludes the budget presentation for this evening. I have the direction I need as it relates to continuing to work on this. It will also be out here at the end of the 22nd.
I've got one suggestion on page, sheet 24, on the one-ton truck. You can take one of these 3.4 tons down and have overload sprays put on it, which will convert the 3.4 tons into one ton, be a whole lot cheaper than a truck.
Take one of you guys, see if that's a viable option for you.
Yeah, you talk to maybe a thousand dollars versus...
Eighty-five?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hit your brain, Mr. Johnson.
Alright, so that is, concludes my presentation from the budget, and that brings us to executive session. We have one item that was scheduled for our last meeting about the purchase or sale of city property, and Mr. Atkins is here to walk council through what your options are, but we will make do that in executive session.
At this time, it is 7:42, we move into executive session. Section 551.072, Declaration Regarding Real Property, Protecting and Losing Value of Property in Liberation, In Effect, On a Position of Going Down Body and Edition. Purchase or Sell of City Property. 551.07, coming also, consultation with our attorney, and a copy of the motion, seven officers, four to six device, and our... It is now 7:43, we move into executive session.
This conference will now be recorded.
Would you like to call us back into regular session? The action of executive session at this time, and said, do I propose you to adjourn?
Thank you, Bill.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.